All right, thank you. I'd like to call to order May 22nd PCBA meeting at 7:06. Roll please Jen.
Chairman Kemba.
Here.
Commissioner DeGrath is absent by prior notice. Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Sayward.
Here.
Commissioner Rigel is absent by prior notice. Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Here.
We have a forum.
Perfect. The first item is to approve the minutes from April 25th. Anybody has any corrections or additions? If there are none, then I'd like a motion to approve April 25th, 2024, meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? All right, we have nothing old on the agenda. Jump into the new business. The first case is a PCBA case number ZBA 24-06 PUD. It's a public hearing for amendments and variations. The applicant is Manny Rafidia. And the description of the request is an amendment to ordinance O-88-36 for consideration of amendments and variation to the existing PUD per section 5-11-12 of the City of Prospect Height zoning code. And the amendments are listed as the follow. Approval use for to include drive-through restaurants, plat of survey to create two outlet parcels for future development, reduction of total off-street parking for PUD, and increase the number of allowed secondary wall signs from one to two for the new outlets in the city's B for General Services PUD district. Can I please send a motion to open the case number ZBA 24-06 at 7:08? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Director Peterson, you want to give us a briefing of the request and also why we have the request for variance?
Thank you very much Chairman and ZBA members. Prospect Crossing Shopping Center is the largest retail shopping center in the City of Prospect Heights. It's located along the Rand Road retail corridor. It has an existing PUD with lists of already pre-approved uses that the owner of the property can bring in by right. As the property was not designed for drive-through outlets, we'd have to amend the PUD to allow drive-throughs as a use allowed in the PUD. And because it drive-through restaurants is the actual use, that's what would have to be added to the list of permitted uses. The second would be that the amendments ordinance in the zoning code, chapter 5-11, any amendments that add density, change lot configuration, or that does require an amendment to the PUD. And as we're sub, the proposal is to subdivide the lots to add two buildable all parcels. It does require amendment to the original PUD to grant that use. The variations, the first one would be to off-street parking. It's approximately about a 14% discount or reduction in parking. They have over 1,000. It averages out at about 6.4 per square foot, 1,000 square feet of retail space. And there's, in this particular use, there's in excess of approximately 1,100 spaces. They're proposing to go down to a little over, a little under 900. That will need to have some justifications by the applicant. And then the wall signs. Our current ordinance allows buildings with two street frontages to have a second wall sign. The first sign would be full size, the second wall sign is 50% of that size. What the applicant is seeking due to the configuration along Rand Road is a third wall sign, which would be the 50% of the original. So instead of having two wall signs, they'd end up with three, one larger one that's fully locked, and the other two would be at 50% of what's allowed with the full sign. This is a, there is no end user at this point in time. This is to give the landowner an opportunity to market for additional development. And finally, I would like to mention that over the last couple of years, as the city is landlocked, we are looking for future developmental parcels. And I've, we've identified this parcel and a couple of others in town for possible redevelopment by creating additional outlets to build our retail sales base. So this is in keeping with some strategic plan goals that have been presented to the city council. Therefore, that's that. The owner and his team are here this evening to provide testimony. Any questions for me before we start?
Do we know the location of the sign wall?
Not yet. It's just the number that I think that and the-
And that's a requirement because of the additional lots?
Correct. And the, I think the owner, and he can testify to this, is not, it all depends, I suppose, upon the end user, exactly which wall signs that they would be looking. As we do not have an actual plant building in front of us to review, we're looking at the concept of the lots.
Any other questions for Director Peterson? There are none. If the applicant is here, I could swear you in so you could provide testimony. Do you swear that-
If any of the other professionals are going to be providing testimony, you should-
Yeah, I could swear everybody in at the same time for this case. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could come up to the podium, please, state your name and address for the record.
Manny Rafidia, Two Star Lane, South Barrington, Illinois.
If you could give us a, you know, brief description, or you could take as long as you want.
Well, this started about a year ago. Popeyes approached me about putting an hot block, building on Rand Road. And at the point then, the interested party got a little bit, they backed out because they thought it's just too much work for them to go through the zoning and et cetera to get that approved. So I suggested that I would go and get the zoning for the use, especially because we didn't have a drive-through in this property. That wasn't a big thing for them to get, you know, how to go around and get this approved. And secondly, the parking situation. And third is also the signage. So it kind of created a little problem and put discussion back and forth with the broker of Popeyes. He suggested that I go in and get the zoning and subdivide the parcels. He also got another end user that might be Scooter. It's a coffee franchise that coming along the Midwest. There's few already here, but they're throughout the United States. So with that in mind, I think that will bring more traffic to the shopping center. I don't think it's going to affect the parking. Our parking lot always been like, you know, Sahara Desert, so many parking. From originally, when they built that, they didn't have, you know, shared ride parking, they didn't have the laws of drinking as it is now. So people don't use cars, they share cars, and they, so the use of this parking lot is enormous and wasteful, waste of property that could be used to develop these two parcels there.
Quick question for you. Are the other units there on this property, are there any vacant units in there as of right now?
No. Actually, I have 11,000 square feet of former furniture store that I rented and leased, and today then issued a permit for it. 5,000 square feet seafood, seafood bar and restaurant. It's called Ankala, I think. They signed the lease and they're going to start doing their build-out. The 6,000 square feet is at this point in negotiation with a party that want to open something like, like a party room to rent. It's not like a banquet room, but to rent for parties. And another party that wants to do an Indian restaurant with seven suites in the front and do, do like catering in the back. So I got a couple deals on that. Other than that, I have small 300 square feet space next to Atlantis. In addition, Atlantis had just been sold to a new company that much more capable and stronger financially than the previous owner, two partners that are very strong business people, and they signed five-year lease. That was the only tenant in the shopping center that I had a little bit taught that it's going to fall apart and end up, you know, closing down. So these two guys came and they bought them out and just signed on five years, no five-year lease, which just started May 1st.
Have you, like, had the existing owners been notified of this plan, or is that-
I don't have obligation to anybody except for Tony's. The only condition in his lease, not to block the visibility of this sign, which these buildings are below, the height of it, below the street sign.
Okay. That's what I was headed with the question.
I did not consult them, so I don't, maybe if I get this approved to a point where I should just let them know by letter that, you know, as a courtesy, but I really don't have to.
Okay. The applicant did do the proper notice to the surrounding properties within 350 feet of the property. We do have the white cards on file. That notice was complete.
And the only, the only other question that I have is regarding the traffic study. So it's not, not really a traffic study, it's just an assessment, right?
It's not an opinion at this point, but we, I'm willing to, you know, hire a traffic study consultant to do the work.
Right. That would have to be, once the occupant is known, to worry, it could be more meaningful, right?
Correct. The, at this time, because the shopping center was designed with the access it has had, with the square footage and the parking levels and usage levels that are existing, they've already been approved by IDOT for those levels. At this point in time, it would just have to be to verify the impact of the new users at that time when we know who the users are. But based on the, our, our traffic engineer looked at the opinion and said that this point in time, it's consistent with the current standards that they're seeing, and that it is within the range of the overall approval that the mall got back in the eighties.
Okay. Can someone fix that Manny, it's just, it's the hell out of me.
It's like, yeah.
Pat?
Pat, yeah. Can we make that frame squared like?
Sorry. You call Pat, forget it.
Yeah, thank you.
Patrick, take, turn off the microphone for a second.
That was not right. I think this is a great idea. I drove the lot, actually, yesterday. That area seems perfect for these, especially street visibility. I think it'd serve high school students well for a couple of fast food restaurants to give a couple more options. I do wonder if we get, let's say Culvers in there, which is an extreme, I was kind of thinking what end users might be there. We don't have a Culvers in this area. Maybe probably somewhere near Popeyes would be another, obviously. Only concern I would have, which would be the traffic engineer, is how would it impact the traffic when high school times are going on? Because that area is a little mayhem, which you're far on the other end of the park lot. But that's probably the only thing that we'd have to practice, and that would probably be once we get end users and get, they come in for their approval for restaurants.
Right. We never had a problem in this side, the south side of the shopping center. Always had a problem on the north side. So definitely there's, I can, I mean, I've owned this property since 1999, and I could tell you, there used to be, at one point, a dealer that parked cars there for like 50 cars, and I didn't notice until like, what the heck, are we busy? Who are these cars? And I started looking around and looking around, then I, a dealer was just parking his cars there for maybe a few weeks until I caught on.
Do you own the lot that's, I was driving, I know there's a vacant lot that's-
To the north?
To the north end of that, yeah. Is that yours as well?
But that's on the separate, separate pin number.
Is that, is there any plans for that lot?
I don't have any plans. It's developed, we got the water, you know, added and all the utilities. But most of the users that we get, they don't want to be in the back. So it most likely going to end up being like, if we get a medical office that wants like two-story building. At one point, I was interested in developing the entire property and annex an additional acre from the parking lot and put up 100 units, residential units. That was just too much for me at this time. I'm 68 and I don't want to start up like a big project like that. So I backed out of it. And actually, that's what took me so long to think about developing these two beds, because I wanted to reserve the parking for the building. And I took it very seriously, and I really spent a lot of money on plans and everything. But I, and I think it would have been a great idea to put 100 units, especially for the schools. They don't need to worry about their kids' parking. They always suffer with parking. We tow their cars away, and, you know, it's always a mess with the kids over there. But I don't know. I would think medical office with two flat, two stories would be a great idea, but see who would come on one day and consider that.
I was thinking maybe you'd make it into a parking lot and lease to the Hershey students because they're always short of-
Well, you know what the thing is here, I'm not telling you. We pay a million dollar a year in property tax on this. And when we asked the, the school, actually, they asked to give them parking, says, okay, we'll make it, we'll go and apply with the village. We want $500 a year per car. They said, no way. We can't give you that kind of money. I said, first, you don't pay taxes. I pay the taxes, and you don't want to give me any money, just, they wanted to pay $120 a year. So I said, you know what, that is something, I'm not going to just make it-
I know, because I have three kids that went to Hershey, and I think Hershey charges $380.
Oh, it's $380 now?
They charge $380 and they stay home.
And I tell you, I went and I sat with the, who's the big guy for all the schools, the districts, what do they call them?
Superintendent.
The superintendent. And he, you just take care of it. He says, don't trouble me, turn my way. I don't care.
I know, at $380, they're sold out. They still can't, they don't have no parking, their kids that don't get parking, there's a waiting list.
And, you know, I do checks on this maybe four times a year, and we tow like 15 to 20 cars. I don't get anything to benefit out of it. It's against the law to group with, you know, towing company to do anything like that. I just call and say, you know, set up a towing for tomorrow. And I usually do it on a Friday, because that's when I think the kids get relaxed, like, you know, get away during the week. On Friday, they fill up. But, you know, I don't want, you know, I don't want the families to go through that. But I get so many calls from the tenants too, that they complain if these kids were polite, and that's why I told the superintendent. And they would respect one, even when I go and talk to them, I say, you know, you cannot park any, the first thing they give me the finger and they applaud. So what the heck wrong with you, Manny? You're parking. Then, then the parents call me when they tow their cars, and they say, why you towed my car? I said, oh, I left my car in your driveway, by the way. Is it okay? He said, what? I said, yeah, my car is in your driveway. And they panicked. I said, well, what would you do if I left my car in your driveway? You would just throw it away the next minute. I said, it's not your place, it's customers that pay rent. I pay property tax for these parking spaces, and I collect that from tenants. So I owe it to the tenant to keep those parking available. I tried to explain that a million times to the parents and to the, everyone that involved, usually the principal, every new principal come aboard, always wants to make a deal, but they don't want to pay.
I have a couple of questions. So if you don't have an end user or a tenant in mind specifically, how do you know that this is the right size?
Well, this is the prototype of all, not all, but most, I would say, of the, I don't have a count. It's 2,400 square feet. Some of them start to go down to 2,000 square feet. Starbucks start to demise it down to-
Do you mind?
Yeah.
So I, I-
Sorry, can I ask, can I take your name?
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
I need your state and your name.
Name and address for the record.
First name, W.J.I.H., Alkayed, 11313, Brook Crossing Drive, Orland Park, Illinois.
Oh, how do you spell your last name again?
A-L-K-A-Y-E-D. Sorry, I didn't choose it. So the, the way that we figured out the, the size, the, one of the buildings, I don't know if this is possible to put the, the picture on again. So the first one, from the corner, that was designed based on Popeyes, actually.
The 2450?
No, not the red, the other one. Thank you. So this was designed based on Popeyes standards, which is the prototype that they use, and it's around like 2,500 square feet, depends on where they want the walking quarters. So if they want the walking quarters within the building or outside, separate from the build-out. So, but that's basically designed, and the, the number of ceilings, everything is based on their standards. The other building is a rectangle based on the same square footage, because I built restaurants, also design and build restaurants. So that's based on the percentage of kitchen, dry storage, cleaning room, everything compared to the food prep area, which is around like 2,500. The drive-through designed for two lanes, because most of the, there is a big demand on drive-throughs, which eases up many of the parking spaces, and it's, since the pandemic, it's a preference. So, so each lot was designed for two lanes. Next.
Okay, I appreciate that. So based on that, I guess I have a couple of other questions then. Do you think it's an issue going to those restaurants and having to drive through a parking lot to get to them?
What do you mean, like, you know, overlap?
So for instance, where you're saying the Popeyes design is on the bottom, you go in, and then you actually have to go through the parking lot to get to the restaurant?
Well, the, there's a driving aisle, so it's not going to interfere with the parking, because if, the lane that, you know, leads to the drive-through is separate, not from the parking lane. So you have enough queue in the driving lanes and the drive-through lanes, so it's not going to spill over to the parking.
To the parking?
Yes.
But, I mean, there's like no immediate entrance in from Rand Road. You're kind of wiggling your way through to get to the restaurant.
Well, no, we didn't, there's the other lot, the other property, there is another entrance from the other street, not from Rand Road. So we didn't, we didn't consider like another curb cut, because that's going to go through, I don't think that would be allowed, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if all of, so for instance, all of this parking here, you're kind of going in here, and then you have to get through here to get to this place, is what I'm talking about.
Right.
So if there was a way to, you know, shift it somehow, maybe, just so that, I don't know if it's going to be a problem to get to the restaurant if you have to go through the parking lot to get to the restaurant, the circulation, I just-
Well, the main, the main lead to this is a wide, you know, access, so I don't anticipate this to be an issue since the parking, traffic is going north-south anyway, like, you know, during, in the parking lot, because it's a very busy plaza. So, this way, exactly. So I don't think any traffic that go, that's, you know, heading to the proper, to the new buildings, is going to jam traffic, because there's traffic there anyway. So, but once they get to the pro, to the building, to the drive-through, either they park or go through the queue. So with the, with the, the number of cars in the, in the lanes, in the drive-through lanes, it's, it's fast enough so they can, based on, again, the standards that those restaurants use, it'll be enough basically to relieve, relieve the cars in the front so more cars can park in the back.
And one other comment I have then, on your drive-throughs, it looks like where they're going to do the pickup window is, in my opinion, kind of the back of the building. It looks like the front of your building is actually facing into the park, into the shopping center, based on what you have designed here. So I'm just wondering what your elevations are going to kind of look like, even though this is, you know, preliminary design, facing Rand Road, because that's kind of the back of the building.
Well, the, part of the front, because, you know, we actually discussed this, so Rand is in a diagonal, so you're going to see the front, the side, the drive-through window, and all this. And if you imagine, so you're going to see both sides. If you imagine the building for Popeyes, for example, if that ends up being a Popeyes chicken, the, the, the front and the sides, even including the side of the windows, they're all, you know, well-designed. They, they make it like, sound like something from the south with awnings on the windows. So it looks pretty much the same from the sides and the front. The other building, it's, it's a footprint of a, of a restaurant, but we don't know what restaurant that's going to be. So, but that building specifically, it's a corner building, so you'll be able to see the three sides from the main streets.
Well, it's, again, it looks like this is the front of your building here, just because where you're showing the landscaping here, and your entrance, and your-
Correct, that's the pedestrian walk?
Yeah. So I'm just saying, that's, this is what we see from Rand Road, and the cars going by, so I would just encourage you to have sensitivity to the elevations that are facing Rand Road.
Right.
I have a couple of things, so, that's where I was wondering. I think, and I know this is preliminary, but this is your existing parking?
Yes.
So this, see how the traffic flow has to come back and jog back in?
Right.
From these developments that I've been part of, when they're adding outlets, they try to keep traffic flow straight across, so people aren't jogging in and jogging out. So I don't know if you can do, I don't know if you can modify that to make that more concurrent with what the existing one, it's really just this drive aisle? Like, this drive aisle will straighten, and I think also, getting, if you're coming from this end, this turn coming back around here, I think that's going to be a real dumb radius. I think you need to modify this aisle and just make it more turn-friendly at that point. And this is, I know it's preliminary, just maybe your constructive criticism based on what I've seen in my experience of doing this. I mean, I, I don't know, it's going to modify, because for the restaurants-
We, we really don't know-
Who's going to be there, right?
Exactly.
And for the restaurants, I'm part of, it's usually, drive-throughs are 1,600 to 2,200 square feet. So this might pare down to 1,600 square feet. Also, my daytime job is construction and building restaurants, so I build a lot of drive-through restaurants at 1,600, it's kind of like the minimum, the 2,200 is kind of where you are. So I know it'll change, but I'm just suggesting if you do end up with this design going forward.
Sorry to cut you off there, but the, the last one I did for drive-through was in Bridgeview, and they asked me for 10 cars in the queue. So including, they wanted the drive-through windows. and they asked me for ten cars in the queue. So, uh, including, uh, they wanted the drive-through windows. So a total, but now with the two lanes, I have way more than this. So, um, that's why I have a little concern of jamming the parking lot from the drive-through.
Yeah, I'm seeing from my side too, I do see a lot of buildings, even drive-by around Rand, like Dunkin's, the drive-throughs up the window, up against the main street. I think that's, buildings are more tendency to be not just aesthetically pleasing from one side, all four sides are aesthetically pleasing. They're putting canopies on buildings. So I think in general, I think the drive-through along Rand, you see that a little more common now than you used to, because it's, it just tends to be traffic flow. I think that might, depending on your end user is and how they want it, because they have, they typically have an input on, like a Popeyes or a Starbucks, they'll, they'll, they'll put some input on how they want this design too.
Yeah, like the new trial now for McDonald's is a, is a, is a restaurant with just drive-throughs. There's no, there's no walk-in. The, uh, the new, the new, uh, McDonald's. So there's a big, uh, emphasis now on drive-throughs.
Yeah. So I think in general, the layout works. I think there's some potential traffic flow stuff that can be, but I think that'll get probably improved on as you get end users figured out for each corner.
I agree.
Any other questions?
Do we have a requirement on materials for buildings?
Um, in terms of not combustibility or?
Finishes, brick, EFS siding?
We really do not.
Okay.
Does the PUD?
No.
Was anything written into the PUD?
No, it was not.
Um, if this is, if this is a franchise, they will demand their finishes. Um.
Yeah, I know, I, I understand that too. I'm just wondering if that's gonna limit you in any way potentially?
Right, right.
As well, you know, because I know like Starbucks has their standard brick siding.
Exactly.
Buildings, not that Starbucks, Starbucks.
Uh, covers, uh, you mentioned covers, they have their own standards, um, color scheme, material finish.
But I, from my, if you have to acquiesce to a city, they usually find a way to, find a way. You might not have to acquiesce here. I was just checking if there was something that would be a hurdle for you guys.
Okay.
If there was. I don't, I don't anticipate there being one. I, I'm extremely excited to see something like this cover. This is a great idea in terms of outlets.
Um, uh, to us, when we were discussing this, we, we saw this potential, because it's, it's really like, it's unused. Like if you look, if you look during the day, during the week, you know, the days, at that spot, it's vacant, literally vacant.
The only time I've seen.
No one uses it, it's just a dead area.
The only time I've seen the parking lot really heavily used is if home bar is extremely busy. And that would be off-hours from when these are busy anyways. That's the only time I've seen like where the parking lots
Right.
tend to get to the back, and that's usually late night, from what I've been told.
Yeah, but with, with proposing something like this, I mean, you mentioned, but this will, in, in our view, not just, you know, utilize the space, but, you know, enhance the whole curb, you know, uh, the, the intersection.
I agree. So what we're approving is just lot two and three, correct, Dan?
Uh, that.
Three and four.
When, if we go to the next slide, please, which shows how the overall plat of subdivision would look.
An updated, uh, legislative survey?
Yes, so if we can kind of get that.
The one in the northwest is lot two.
So the whole Prospect Crossing is currently two lots, the grass lot and then the rest of the shopping center currently. What they're proposing is the lot three and four, which would be the two pad sites for the restaurants is the two-lot subdivision.
So it should be called lot three and four, not lot two and three?
Correct.
Because it's called, it's called two in the packet we have.
It's, it, that one.
Or we could just change two.
Well, hold on a second. Manny, I have a question for you. That grass lot, is that part of this? Because it's, I think, the last one.
So this was, uh,
Yep.
originally lot one, the big one, lot two, the vacant grass area. So now what we're proposing is lot two, three and four.
So it was, uh, the, one of the original, the revised one did not.
Yeah, so this is the revised updated legislative survey.
It was just a timing issue on the name, um, package.
So what's the, we have?
So this is now two, one, two, three and four. So this was actually considered two.
Got it.
And that goes back to the, the way the original, uh, plat was done. The first one that showed the shopping center did call, that had the full center and parking area, did have that north lot as lot two, so it was a tight number and system. So we'll update the packet.
And any, uh, once there is a tenant, they would have to submit just to your department then, circulation and parking plans, or, or does that come before us again, or how does that work?
By adding drive-through restaurants to the list of approved uses for the PUD, that, um, takes it out of the realm of the plan commission, because, you know, we see every restaurant except for what goes into the small, because restaurants as a use aren't permitted.
Okay.
Right. What we could do is a condition that, you know, it would, for the tenant, the end user would have to provide a traffic study to justify their, 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 their design, you know, that the, it will fit and meet the standards, you know, the, of, of safety and engineering and staff.
Sounds good.
I think that's good.
Yep.
So by approval would be the drive-through would be?
It would be the traffic study, I mean, city engineer, city engineer approval.
Good, okay.
Perfect.
Okay, um, there are no other questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Um, if there's no one else that would like to speak to the case, then I would like a motion to close the public hearing case number.
Don't you hear?
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, that's. You swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Marius Falta, twelve twenty-five Stratford. I have a question. So, is it, because I make the picture, so the lots are kind of not covering with, with the first slide, where we saw that, that the slot number two, it, it was, I, I have an impression that was closer to the drive-in, uh, right in front of the home bar.
So it would be the two lots, it, the original plat of survey that the PUD is based on, the current PUD is, the big lot is lot one, and then up on the far upper left-hand corner and the square, that is lot two.
Right.
Okay, that's lot two. So what we're talking about is a number change. The two new lots are going to be down in that area.
Down in there, okay, that's all, okay.
And, um. We will get the copy of the updated.
All right. So there's a hill, uh, and when there is sign is located, the, the hill's gonna be touched, or it's gonna be sick?
There is no plan, like, village didn't ask us, the city didn't ask us for any, um, any, uh, operation to the, uh, perimeter.
Okay.
But they do.
At, at this time, everything was, uh, was being contained within the existing parking area. I believe if you go to the, the lot that shows the driving, yeah, that one there, um, you can see the, the left-hand rectangular restaurant.
Right.
That is using the existing drive, so they're not planning to go outside of the parking area, because then that gets into the state of Illinois IDOT right away, and that changes timing, that changes everything.
Yeah, as a, as a resident, of course, it would be a great addition to the Prospect Heights, so, yeah. I, I think it's, will be a great thing for us, for residents. I mean, personally, I would love that the bottom, uh, uh, drive, the, the bottom building would be a little bit to the right, so we'll kind of, uh, height the home bar, but at least it will give, give me a buffer, that sun buffer.
I know you've been a big advocate of the home bar.
But, and I like it, and I like it, I've been, I've been, I've been a client of home bar, so I'm going at night, so I know exactly how many cars is there. But, yeah, I think that would be a, a great addition to the city, so, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You asked about the grass, grassy hill, and you can see it on that little triangle there with the sign.
Grass, yes, it's just ideal, it's gotta be altered.
Okay, if we have, uh, no one else to give testimony, can I please have a motion to close the public hearing case number ZBA twenty-four zero six PUD?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, any further discussion from the commissioners? I like it. I mean, it, it seems, seems to be nice. I think the, I think the addition for traffic study and, uh, making sure that, you know, that it works would be great, since we don't know what's going, what's going in there. Uh, the parking lot does look empty most of the time. Uh, I think it would help all the other businesses to have something nicer off of Rand Road to invite people in.
I think that's a hundred percent right. You have, you put a couple anchor, drive-through restaurants, it drives so much traffic to an area. I think this lot could use some more buildings up front. It's, this is, from a lot of developments I work with, this is like perfect.
I would encourage you to talk to, uh, Tony's though, as, just to let them know what's going on. I think their electronic message center is gonna be right in front of one of the, the new proposed buildings.
I will, I will.
It's like right here now, so.
The, uh, the, uh, I, I see what you're saying, but I don't think it's gonna be in a way. The only, the only condition that they have in their lease is not to block the view. Their sign is, uh, you know, on Rand Road before, uh, before, before the building, so it, it's never an issue. But I, I was, I was it with them, because, uh, the lease only states that any outlot built or would be built in the future will not obstruct the view of the marquee sign. They won't, because their sign is on the, on the grass, and the building gonna be on the parking, so it's not gonna be an issue. But I, I, I will have to let.
You, you, you can, you, you don't have to worry about blocking their main store sign, just the marquee sign up front. Is that correct?
Even with the main store, it's so high, it's almost thirty feet high.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And these buildings are, are, but I don't even know, how, 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 how.
Twenty-two.
It's like sixteen, eighteen feet.
I think with the parapet walls, you're probably around twenty-two, because most people build parapet walls to cover the rooftops and the makeup area units.
But I, I, I will, I will take your advice and I'll, I'll talk to them about it. You know, they just took over by, by, um, investment group. Now it's no longer Tony, my neighbor that I used to sit, I, I sit with them on the board of our, uh, uh, the, uh, subdivision, and he's my next-door neighbor. So he's no longer the owner now, it's a, a company out of, I don't know where. So it's hard to get ahold of anybody and talk to them about anything. But I will, I'll try to reach.
Yeah, you can just make the effort.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, for the comment, I appreciate it.
All right, um, well, uh, if there's no other test, no other comments, uh, can I please have a motion to accept into the public record the evidence, uh, presented this evening for case number ZBA twenty-four zero six PUD?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I hate looking at this, guys, we do need a voice, or a roll call, I'm sorry.
Oh, gosh, we're gonna be here forever.
Is this your first time?
Commissioner Patel.
We don't have to. Aye.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
And Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
It's lucky there's only five of us.
I try to cut it. I try to, I try to streamline as much as possible.
Well, now we have to vote on four different things, so we've got some, I got some talking to do. Okay, uh, can I please have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number ZBA twenty-four zero six PUD, uh, for item number one, which is amendment list of approval use, approved uses to include drive-through restaurants?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward, aye. Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye, and I forgot to include that we want to.
But we'll add, we'll, uh.
Add at the end, okay. All right, can I please have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number ZBA twenty-four zero six PUD, uh, bullet point number two, pledge of subdivision to create two outlet parcels for future development?
So when do we include that, uh, the traffic study?
What we will do is, um, because we are, the, the wall signage will need staff approval on the location of three, we'll add the conditions of the traffic study at the same time.
Okay.
So we can do it at the, at the very end?
Yes, we'll add it as an overall condition to the whole approval.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward, aye. Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Uh, can I please have a motion to approve case number ZBA twenty-four zero six PUD, uh, reduction in total off-street parking for the, for the PUD? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Seward, aye. Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye. And can I please have the fourth motion to, uh, to, uh, to recommend to the ci, to the city council approval of case ZBA twenty-four zero six PUD to increase the number of allowed secondary wall signs from one to two for the new outlets in the city's B four general services PUD district with the condition, uh.
Of, of exterior elevation approval, which would include signs and traffic analysis for the final tenants.
I'll make the motion.
My second, please.
Can I quick question on that, though?
Yes.
Does the traffic study only come about if they do two signs?
No, no, no.
Is it tied in all four?
Yes.
Okay, then I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward, aye. Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
And Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Uh, when is this going to be heard next?
Uh, the, I'm going to try and get everything written up for the June tenth city council meeting. Yeah, I should be able to get everything done.
Do you want the traffic study to order?
If, if you want to solidify the traffic study, I would get that done as quickly as possible. Uh, that's the base, base that. The other thing is, is, um, make sure that, um, have, should double-check the parking count. Okay, because I was, I had a little more parking than you guys had to start and a little less on the, and so just double-check the parking counts.
Well, what was called in physically counted?
Thank you.
I think.
I will check what.
But.
I think it's in the legislative survey that was, uh.
Yeah.
I think, also on the.
Showing all the parking lots.
On the traffic study, wouldn't it be better they know the end user, because that impacts your traffic study, right? If you do like a Starbucks versus.
Culvers.
A Culvers, that, I mean, your traffic.
Honestly, it's, uh, I'm close to Popeyes and Carver, Carver is a new, you know, it's a Korean restaurant that they have about maybe eight hundred units now, and Scooter, so I will probably find out before the meeting. I, I don't think I can find out for sure who's going in or not, but, um, I will just have to get the traffic study of some, three or four franchises that I'll be working with.
I think, I think for your approval, he doesn't need it for the June tenth meeting, right? No, I think it's really just, once you find an end user, you'll have, when you come in for permit for that end user, correct before, wrong then, you'll, they're required at that time just to make sure it flows well with the user you're choosing. So I don't think it holds up anything you want to do right now.
I don't.
In ter, in terms of the city council, because we didn't get, the number was kind of either on, on the parking counts, that should, you should make sure you're set on that for.
I'm trying to get, and, and, and we're still on the record, or we're on the record now?
We're, this is, this is just, they've already made the recommendations about, this is advice to you.
Well, what I'm trying to do is to get the traffic past, um, uh, Old Will. It seems like everything that grows, grows to the west of Old Will, and they just don't come further on this side on Rand Road. For some reason or another, you know, Arlington High has captured every franchise that you can think of. And I'm trying to get the best franchise that I can bring there to draw more traffic, not only, you know, to help the community and the city, also to help the other tenants in the suburbs. So I have, I would have less turnover than, you know, having like every three years or five years, having to get a. five years, having to get a tenant and so forth. So I really have to be very, very particular about picking the franchise, more so than just the first one that walks in, I'm gonna give them the, uh, uh, you know, the, the green light. We'll see what happens, I mean, it all, well, that, I am not really in a hurry to get this thing, um, like, to the end user right now. I'm gonna be picky about choosing the end user.
Understood, but.
We haven't got a chance to really be what we're supposed to be. We're the biggest center in Prospect Heights, and nobody knows about us. We have to say where we, we are next to Target, and Target also, Target designs, nobody knows anything.
We're, we're trying to change that, Manny.
Yeah, it's not easy. I've been owning this property for twenty-five years, but it's, it's, it's not easy.
Okay. I've got conditions that, so, thank you.
We're good? Thank you for, thank you for your testimony.
Good luck. You guys have a nice, um.
Memorial day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a roll call on every submission of the public records. Okay, okay, all right, got it, not bad. All right, um, next is PZBA case number ZBA twenty-four zero seven SUB, it's a public meeting, um, the applicant is Darian Roschkovjak, at two oh one West Kennelworth in Prospect Heights, and Mr. Rosch, uh, what is the, oh, we want to create a, um, single lot of record for the property. Can I please have a motion to open case number ZBA twenty-four zero seven SUB at seven fifty-eight PM?
And, uh, on this particular one, it's a public meeting, not a public hearing, because it's a plat subdivision.
Yep, yep, I know that, I know that, Ben.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Got the applicant. I could quickly swear you in, do you swear that your testimony will be the, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, it's a public meeting, so we don't need that, but.
And, and if anybody else wants to, if you want to do that for record, that's fine. What you did, that's fine.
Uh, if you could have your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Darian Roschkovjak, and two oh one West Kennelworth.
Uh, if you could please give us, uh, well, we know, we know it's, it's mainly a formality, uh, is that correct, Director Peterson?
Yeah, the city ordinance requires any of the older properties that were platted, um, I believe, prior to two thousand and eight, uh, and that was not a single lot of record, you know, we've got those examples where it, it's part of lot nine of this subdivision, or it's lot six of this, of fifteen of this record. We, the city code wants those to be cleaned up so that they are standalone lot, not part of other lots.
Any, any questions from the commissioners at this point? We've done this before, it seems like it's a, it's just a, just a formality.
The, just to let know that, uh, the applicant, um, by doing this, because he is proposing to tear down the existing house and build his home on that lot, um, the lot, the home that he's proposing is in, you've got just about everything done under review, correct?
Yeah, I'm just waiting to hear back, I think.
Yeah, we've, we've done initial reviews on it, they're, they're coming back with some revisions, it's, uh, if it's not in already, we'll be in for those revisions. Um, and doesn't require any variations, it's in conformance with the, uh, same standards in the R-one district, so it is more of a formality.
Yeah, I did see the letter from the city engineer that he had no issues with that as well, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your testimony, sir. Can I please have a motion to close?
You want to have one, yes, okay.
Oh, anybody else would like to speak to the case? Okay, uh, if there's no other comments or other testimony, can I please have a motion to close case number ZBA twenty-four zero seven SUB at eight oh one PM?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, can I please have a motion to accept into the public record testimony presented this evening for case number ZBA twenty-four zero seven SUB?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
And Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Uh, can I please have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number ZBA twenty-four zero seven SUB, uh, to create a single lot of record for the property located at two oh one West Kennelworth in Prospect Heights?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
This, this will be on the June tenth city council. It'll be six thirty here at this room, it's a Monday night.
Okay. Do I need to present, or?
Um, it's highly recommended, but if you can't make it, just send me an email.
Okay.
Because this is more of a technical formality in terms of compliance with the zoning code versus variations are changing. Lot, lot is just creating what it is.
Perfect.
Thank you for your testimony, good luck with the project, and we're going to be neighbors.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. You're killing corners from me. All right, uh, next.
Ruined his day.
Hey, it's eight o'clock, I haven't eaten yet, okay?
Oh, we got hay.
Can I, uh, the next case is a ZBA, uh, case number twenty-four zero eight V. The applicant is Hector and Erica Salazar, at three oh nine East Palatine Road, and the applicant is requesting, um, to have two variations to the property at the address above. Uh, they are the contract purchaser for the property, and they are requiring variations to reduce the minimum size lot from twenty thousand square feet to fourteen thousand seven hundred twenty-seven square feet, and a second one is to increase the allowable FAR from twenty percent to twenty-one point five percent, to allow construction of a single-family home in the city's R-one single-family, single-family residential district. Uh, can I please have a motion to open the case number ZBA twenty-four zero eight V at eight oh four PM?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, do you want to give us a briefing, or?
This, this is a lot that's been vacant for a long time. In nineteen fifty-nine, IDOT took a large portion of the property for the expansion of the Palatine Road footage lanes, uh, in doing such, and then a secondary taking for sidewalk as well. Um, left the lot, uh, under the city code standards. Back in, when IDOT did that, it was unincorporated Cook County, and people could have built on there. I believe in history, there was at one time a small house on the property, but it's been vacant for many, many, many years. Um, the Salazars are contract purchasers, and, um, would like to build a house there to become a buildable lot, it does need the variance for the lot size reduction. They've also submitted us concept, concept plans for the house, which, um, exceed the maximum FAR for the smaller lot by roughly two hundred and fifteen square feet, or about one percent. Um, both, a minimal variation. The Salazars are here to discuss this. Um, you exhibit number six, Jan, or Jan, if you could go to the six. Um, this is a markup of the platte survey that staff has performed, which shows that , uh, with the variation, the lot can still meet all the required R-one zoning setbacks and have a buildable area that would support the house that's being proposed. Um, finally, they will be, as part of this, at the time of occupancy, will be changing the address from three oh nine East Palatine to seven fourteen Glendale, because the access points will be off of Glendale.
Okay. Um, we have the applicant, would you like to testify? Swear you both, and if you would like to testify as well, I can swear you at the same time? This is the last case, you might as well testify.
I looked right there, and I was curious what they were in with it. I was gonna make sure it wasn't a dispensary or. But I'm here in this, I'm.
Um, do you swear that your testimony will be the whole, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Hector and Erica Salazar, our address is one thirteen Mandell, uh, in Prospect Heights.
If you could please give us, yeah, description of your project.
So we are the potential buyers for this lot, um, we just want to build a two-story home, uh, I think we submitted, um, kind of like what we would like to do, um, yeah, so we, we were interested in the lot, and we looked, uh, into what we needed to do to make it, um, something that we can build on, and because of the reduction that happened, um, I'm not sure when, but, um, this is just something that we have to make sure that we do things the right way, so, um, yeah, I'm not sure how much more we can do besides saying that we're trying to build a home there for our family and, and do things the right way.
All right, so, uh, the, there were, one question that I had was, are you planning, uh, is this a home for you, or is this a?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be a home for us.
Okay, okay. I don't have any other questions for the applicant, I have any more questions for the direct, for Director Peterson? If anybody else has any?
So I have a question for, um, Director Peterson, is this, um, area in town have any drainage problems? I noticed driving through it, it, there's a lot of dips and there's creeks and.
Oh, uh, this is, this is part of the Benedictine Water Subdivision, uh, this end of it is actually outside of that, but about, between Glendale and Spruce, there's a large vacant lot, um, that is at the top of the hill, and then that flows down the hill about eleven foot drop from the northern side of the property down to Spruce, and then eventually goes past Spruce into the wetlands that are behind East Kennelworth and that neighborhood, it's the McLennan, McLennan property. Um, down there, there are some drainage ditch, you know, that's already there, um, there is a little bit of wetlands on that, um, the vacant parcel in the midpoint of the lot, but nothing related to this parcel.
Yeah.
Okay, um, but if you go down Spruce, there's a vacant lot kind of on the corner of Spruce as you go from west to north, um, that has some storm sewers on that property to help with the drainage, but not this lot.
And even though we don't own the property yet, we also did a soil test just to make sure that the soil was, um, fine for new construction, and that came back, um, with good results, so, um, I'm not sure if that, that helps, but we've got that done already.
One, uh, question that if you could adjust, right now, it's kind of acting as a buffer for, uh, the frontage road and for Palatine Road for that piece of property, and there's a lot of, um, trees and shrubs on it, on that property now. Um, what kind of a buffer would you maintain for the frontage road, or have you thought that through, and not only for your property, but actually from the properties behind you?
So the homes behind us have like a small berm. Um, I think once we purchase a lot and we get it to our architect on what we want to do, that's probably something I would want to copy off neighbors that are in the back, maybe doing like a berm, um, and then a fence as well.
You're talking to the ones at three oh three Palatine?
The ones.
Or the one on Glendale today?
No, no, it's on Palatine as well.
So when he's talking front facing Glendale, back would be the neighbor to the west on Palatine.
You mean our neighbor behind us? So like if Palatine is here and Glenbrook is here, you mean the neighbor behind?
I think she's referring to the ones down Glendale, right?
Well.
That's why I raised the point, so if you look at this, which is the actual platte survey, the orientation is, is the Glendale Road, which is the right-hand side frontage there, by definition is the front yard.
Okay, so, um, I guess then the twenty-five foot setback side yard, that's the area that needs the buffer for the frontage road.
Yeah.
Uh, which had, obviously has a good buffer now, because our whole lot is a buffer.
It is a buffer, yeah.
Yeah, so how would you propose to maintain a buffer within that twenty-five foot, um, side yard setback?
Yeah, we were thinking of doing a berm, if not, it'd be a fence, um, to go on that side. So depending on, like he said, whatever our, our architect decides how much space we have, that's what we're gonna go about, I mean, we do want to have some type of yard.
And by buffer, you mean like?
Visual, and sound.
Visual and sound buffer.
Yeah.
For someone that, I used to live off Palatine, like in those townhomes, that noise is, it can be loud, so, um, being potential homeowners there, you'll, that noise will carry, so, right now, that, those trees that are on that lot are protecting your neighbors now, which obviously you'll have to take down, because that's where the house is going, for your sanity and your neighbor's sanity.
Build a berm.
You might have to find, I, I think it, I think it's gonna take some time, but something that's gonna grow to height, that's gonna, to cover arborities might be a good idea. Just something you're right, but that, once that, once the leaves fall, and that, use your way down that overpass, it, it gets, it can get loud, trucks just, and I used to live in those townhomes, and it was, was one of the reasons I.
Wolf, um, as well, and it, it does get a little loud sometimes, but.
If, if the zoning board members were, um, akin to this, um, this is technically a corner lot with the Palatine Road and that, and technically any fences or shrubs to act as fences have to be at the twenty-five foot building line, we could at this time add a, a relief to allow them to build up to that, that side yard lot line between the twenty-five foot and the Palatine frontage.
Okay, so it wouldn't be right up?
Because the way the ordinance reads is on, if you could go to the other example, who's, the other one that looks like they have the markup? See, at this one, so, so right here, this twenty-five foot would be the building line. So any fences technically on a corner side yard would be required to fear fence there, so that, that space between there and Palatine Road frontage, that northern property line would still be open technically. They, it would be, if we're looking to put some buffering and screening, we could probably allow as a condition, relief to allow fencing or screening along that northern property line, or whatever footage back we would like.
So, so technically, the, the, when you say built, so the house could go where we have the twenty-five feet, forty feet, fif-?
In that.
Excuse me, fifty feet and fifty feet, in that rectangle, that's where the house could go.
That's the buildable area of the lot.
Right, but if we, uh-huh, because it's.
So the house, the house could go up there, but because this is technically a corner.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because it's a corner lot, any, any structure, the fence or anything that gets used is supposed to be here, and we've had a number of variances over the years, with the hardship of not having the full width, with the hardship of the Palatine frontage, it would be appropriate to also amend, uh, given them some relief to either berm and screen or berm and fence here.
So, so currently, all those bushes that sit there, they sit in that twenty-five foot strip?
But those have just, yeah, but those have just been natural.
Right, 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 yes, yes.
Planted, so.
But you don't need an amendment like that for shrubbery or a berm, you're just talking about a fence.
Correct.
Well, you would, because shrubbery is fence.
We've, we've, people have done it, and this is one of the problems we're gonna look at, at our code, when we do the code analysis, we probab-, we, the code actually reads any planting shrubs, trees that are to provide a screening and act like a fence are supposed to be defined as a fence, but we probably have, out of our three thousand or four thousand homes in town, we probably have fifteen hundred that have that exact condition, aren't.
It's just called landscaping.
So that is one of those items in our upcoming zoning review has already been circled.
So let's add it to theirs, so they don't have to worry about in case it doesn't get circled.
Because I would like to build a berm as close. Because I would like to build the berm as close to the end of the street as possible and then maybe some arborite as the top.
Yeah.
And then our fence, if we have a fence.
And based on your floor plan, you're gonna, I, I just read it about, just quick dimensions, like thirty-six, thirty-seven feet. So you have forty-three feet wide, so you're gonna be pretty much close to that building line.
Right.
So they're gonna need that relief. So I would, I would think that's a good idea to add.
The, the same, the same hardships that are the basis for the lot size reduction are the same hardships that could be used for finding a fat to allow the relief.
Okay.
And we don't need to, as a condition, make sure that those setback requirements are met, correct?
If, if we create it as a separate statement right now in terms of the, are you talking for the fencing or?
No, just to make sure that, so what we're doing, the, the variation for is the FAR and, and the reduction of the minimum size lot. But I just want to make sure that they understand that they have to meet the setbacks that are given.
Right, like the forty feet and the twenty-five.
Correct.
And the fifteen.
So just so that they're under the understanding that those are not being given any kind of a variance for.
Correct, yeah. I think we're gonna be right, like on the money with the house that we're planning on building, so.
Because that's what's really gonna affect the neighbors as well is, you know, the, the location of your house in relationship to the other neighbors.
So do we want to put in as a, as a condition, a required? I, I know you will want that probably, but.
All setbacks have to be maintained.
Well, setbacks maintained for building, but, but we create a buffer between, between Palatine and the rest of the neighborhood by fence, a shrubbery or something, something, something meaningful so that, I mean, I look at it in simple terms. If, if there's shrubbery there now and the neighbors have been there for, you know, twenty, thirty years, they're next to a lot that's not buildable. All of a sudden, we, we tell them, okay, we're going to allow to build a building there. Like, oh, okay, well, there goes our buffer and now we're exposed to, I mean, you're go, you're going to be their buffer, but, but I, for your sake also, I think it'd be, you know, important to have that buffer from, from Palatine.
There's a variance for the, this setback, side yard of twenty-five that allows shrubbery fence to be within it. That's probably our way of saying.
That's, that's exactly where I was going, coming, getting to Commissioner Patel is that the statement could be as simple as that the variance is being granted for a buffering such as you explained in that area.
Okay. That sounds good.
Gives you a little flexibility.
Right.
With some screening.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your testimony.
No, thank you.
You're sure you don't want to say something?
It's not a dispensary, so we're good.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
I'd stick around for a minute for a vote. We're not quite done.
Any comments?
You wanna close the public hearing first?
Well, I don't have.
Hungry, hungry? We're going to Machi's also dinner.
All right, well, let me, let me close the, let me close the public hearing. So can I please have a motion to close case number ZB twenty-four zero eight V at?
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty P M.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any, any comments, any concerns? No?
Nope.
So Dan, I just have a quick question. Are any of the lots west of this in the same situation then?
No.
So there, there are no buildable lots to the west or, or east?
Right now, the, the lots that are for sale to the east are technically in the Village of Wheeling. This is the very last lot we have in our town. So east of Glendale is the four lots at the corner. And the four lots at the corner are owned by the same people that own this house that are selling it. So we've had inquiries over time about making this a rezonant commercial for parking for possible future commercial development. We've said no.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay. So at this point in time, there is no plans. I've checked with the Village of Wheeling, there's no plans of, or anything interest in that corner yet.
East of it, what about west?
West, there's a single-family home that's been there a long time and it's a large lot. On the other side of that is a cell tower. Then you've got the, what is the, the organization that has it? There was a religious organization, the Giovanni Bosco Society owns the big vacant lot. And there are restrictions on that for, because they have no permitted access to Palatine frontage because it conflicts with the exit ramp off of Palatine Road. So that's, if you look on a map, that lot is a big rectangle, then has a large section that goes down to Spruce. And so anything that would be ever built up on that lot would have to be accessed through Spruce Drive. There is some wetlands on that property and there's some covenants for, they can't block any overland flowage and must maintain the drainage patterns that exist on that because that, you start getting some drainage issues on that lot. But then east of that is a, a single-family house on a little above an acre and a third that's, I just heard one under contract. So that may be coming before us here soon.
You have that white house?
Yeah, the old white house.
It was like really right, it was right up against.
Yeah, everything's right on the sidewalk because those are old farmhouses. And then when Palatine kept on growing and growing and growing, the state took literally right up to six feet in front of their home.
So is that what I need a variance for lot size?
No, that's an acre. That's an over acre. My, my, my thought is that'll probably come in as a, either two-lot subdivision or a different, a different zoning.
Is Glendale a one-way? No, it's not. It's.
No, it's a two-way, but it starts on Palatine frontage and ends on Palatine frontage. It's a horseshoe shape.
It starts on Spruce and ends at Glendale.
Right, but it's, it's so, what I'm headed with this is if we put big-time shrubs here, we're not obstructing view from, from frontage road.
No, because frontage road is a one-way east.
That's where you'd be looking, but it's.
You know, we would keep, we, we'd make, we'd make sure it's, we have code requirements that the shrubs have to be backed so far from the corner, the lines of sight have to be there. We're only giving them some buffer. We're not giving them the sight-like variations.
Okay, all right, good.
Plus, it's, that's the frontage before the exit. So the only traffic you really deal with is people coming out of Maple Street, that Amalo, or Amherst taking a right, which doesn't happen. It's not a huge traffic area, I think. Well, again, not very huge traffic area.
I forgot where we are. Do we need to close? We closed, right?
We closed, we're at accepting.
Okay. Any other, no other comments, considerations, concerns? Okay, can I please have a motion to accept into the public record evidence presented for case number ZB eight twenty-four zero eight at eight twenty-four P M?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
And Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Can I please have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number ZB eight twenty-four zero eight V for the variation to, to reduce the minimum lot size from twenty thousand square feet to fourteen thousand seven twenty-seven square feet?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mishewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye. Can I have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number twenty-four zero eight V to increase the allowable FAR from twenty percent to twenty-one percent to allow the construction of a single-family home in city's R one district?
We'd add the.
No, no, we're gonna add that as a third separate.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
And then the third one here, I'll read this.
Okay.
For your consideration, is to grant.
Can I have a motion for that?
Well, we're not there yet. And if you need to tweak, we can do that. Grant the variation for relief to install, allow the installation of buffering, including fencing, shrubs or trees within the twenty-five foot corner side yard setback.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Seward.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishewski.
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye. Thank you all.
Good luck.
Good luck with your project.
You'll be on June tenth, six thirty here for a first reading.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Do you know the first case with the man that he owns?
Yeah.
Does he own just part of that big lot, Tony's?
He owns the whole thing.
He owns the whole.
He and a partnership group own, but he's the, he's the principal owner of the whole shopping center.
Yeah.
So they, they, where the, that, the soft sushi, that little building?
Yeah.
That's a different owner.
Oh, okay, because there's that whole vacant where you drive in off of Rand Road. I mean, right, it's all vacant and it's been like that for a long time.
Well, that's the second lot that you own.
The green, the green grass lot?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, that's that number two lot we were talking about.
Oh, it is, okay, I couldn't really think it out.
Yeah, he, he's had a lot of, he's had that property marketed for a long time, but because it's on Willow, not Rand, he has gotten very little interest. And that's what he was talking about, possibly building an apartment on that lot.
Oh, okay, there's interesting stuff. Okay, I don't, I don't live in Prospect Heights, I'm across the street from these little towns.
Okay.
Across the road.
And you, you, you fit within the, the notice requirements.
Well, you know what, I, I'm more in Prospect Heights than you.
Okay.
Because we're right across the street. And we've been the twenty-seven original owner of this town. So that lot, I think the house burnt down.
Yeah, I believe it did.
Years ago, it's been vacant since. And I know they were trying to sell it, so I saw, they changed zone to be, to be three and a half.
On the, on the other ones.
Okay, and I wasn't sure, that's all we're doing. So I was just kind of curious.
So you all, thank you. It's really stupid, I know, I'm sorry, it's because of the vinyl. So June tenth is when you guys say what?
No, the city council, these are, this.
We're, we're a dry rub. We're like nobodies.
No, these are the, these are the, PZBA members are assigned to do the work, go through all the plans. They make recommendations to the city council who then have the final.
Decisions.
Decision.
And then on June tenth is when I'll get like the final say of whether or not.
Technically, what we'll talk about next week, because I'll be back in town on Wednesday, I'll give you a call, is that on these types of cases, there's technically supposed to have two readings. First reading where they introduce it to the public, they deliberate, any questions are asked, and then a second reading two weeks later. It's kind of so.
Just to give people an opportunity.
Yeah.
My question for you then is this, my closing isn't set to be done June tenth, so should I postpone it till afterwards?
What I, what I would tell, what I'd tell Ms. P is that it got a unanimous positive recommendation from past mission that the first reading, and we can talk about, when I get back about requesting a waiver of first reading so that it can be done, read on that night and approved that night. So what they're saying is if there's unanimous vote, there was no opposition, everything's favorable, why waste the second meeting?
Okay.
But that's up to the council. That's totally their choice. Staff can recommend, which we would do, so that you don't have to come back, see that it's, we had no opposition, we had no.
I'm glad to hear that, yeah.
So, and, but I'll talk to you in more detail about that on Wednesday.
Okay.
There's the possibility it could get approved that night. Otherwise, the final approval would be two weeks later. Know that it would take four out of five elected officials to overturn this recommendation and the likelihood of that happening is.
Very small.
Okay.
Just make, off the record, make it June eleventh.
Make it June eleventh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, boy, we're sure they're not gonna let you close anyway.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to make sure, I'm like, I don't want to close out something at the end. They're like, oh, never mind, you didn't look out.
There's very little chance it's not gonna get approved, but just in case there's that one percent chance, just do June eleventh.
Okay.
You'll know June tenth. You should know.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to say something else?
Stakey, you said?
Well, for me, I don't know about you guys.
Is, is.
Yes, of course.